This time I'll call the October meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time, board members, please rise for our invocation immediately followed by our pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve Haywood County schools. We pray for your guidance and wisdom as we undertake the decisions that we make, that they might be for the betterment of all concerned and glorifying unto you. Thank you for all the many blessings that we enjoy in this great country, and we ask for peace throughout the world. We ask that our students, staff, and administrators be safe throughout this year, and that we are successful at our task of educating our young people. Now, Lord, be with us as we conduct the business of our schools. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under announcements, our next board meeting will be held here at the Education Center on Thursday, November 7th. And that's due to the fact that we've got a lot of holiday stuff coming up and other issues. Also, we have North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference coming up November 18th through the 20th. I'd like to announce that Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers, cannot be here tonight due to a work commitment, and he was unable to call in tonight due to the lack of cell service where he is, so he's in the boonies somewhere without cellphone service. We're down in South Georgia, so it's sketchy places down there. Any other announcements that need to be made? Okay, under agenda adjustments, help me out, board. I know we have a contract that we want to get approved tonight for Kelly Services. I'll present that.
I have two items from building the grounds.
Let's do, we'll do it after, do it after item 24, we'll add the Kelly Services, and then we'll do the, building the grounds has two issues, correct?
And finance has one.
Okay. That'll come under your regular financial, but you do have an item that you want to be approved or disapproved of. Okay. Okay, we have an add-on of Kelly Services, two items under building the grounds, and one add-on from the Finance Committee. Is there any objections to those agenda adjustments? There being none, we'll add that to the agenda. Now, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion. I hear second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Rogers. We'll give Dr. Bobby Rogers this one. All right, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Ms. Wood, who's got some special presentations tonight.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, central office and guests, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce you, if you have not met already, our Teacher of the Year and our Principal of the Year. Our Teacher of the Year is John Serenius. You want to come on up here? He teaches 5th grade at Jonathan Valley, and when I started teaching, he was teaching 1st grade, I guess, with me at Jonathan Valley, so I've known John for a long time and very well-deserving, and I'm so proud of him, but he is our 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. It's quite an honor. There are so many wonderful teachers in our county, and to be chosen as Teacher of the Year is one of the biggest honors ever for me. I just think that it's such a great place to live and to teach. If you can't be happy teaching in Haywood County, you just can't be happy teaching because we have the best kids and the best school system. So thank you all for your leadership, and I just enjoy teaching more every year, and I just can't wait. I just, I love being with the kids, and I just want to get back to them, to be honest. I had to go to the interview today for Regional Teacher of the Year, and I actually missed what they were doing in class. They were working on a big project, and I can't wait to see what they did when I get back, so thank you very much.
And our Principal of the Year, Lori Fox, from Haywood Early College, and I had the pleasure of meeting with them last week, the whole staff at the Early College, and during lunch, they were talking about kids and instruction and all this good stuff that, you know, when I was teaching at Jonathan Valley, we didn't necessarily talk about that during lunch, but they were all talking about that and what was good for kids, and they all know their kids, and she's done a great job as the leader there, so Lori.
I just, I just want to echo Mr. Serenius in what an honor it is to represent such a fine group of people, the principals in Haywood County, and to represent a school that just motivates you and inspires you to do more and be better, and you go to bed thinking about it at night, and you wake up in the morning thinking about it, and you just can't wait to get there the next day. So thank you, thank you for what you do for us.
Check out your social skills, your photography skills. Next on our agenda is Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, it is my distinct pleasure to present you with an award as the board. I'll bring it up to you, and we'll let Belinda get your picture in a moment. Most of you know this, but for public consumption, school boards in North Carolina are recognized with a Silver Bale Award when the whole board, the entire board, has a minimum of 12 hours of CEU training during the year. Not every school system does that, especially a nine-member board. It's easy to miss someone. So this was actually presented at the recent, back in September, the recent Regional School Boards Association Meeting, and at this time, it's my pleasure to present to you in our meeting the Silver Bale Award for Whole Board Training.
Yay, board!
I don't know if y'all want to stand up, get close to each other, how you want to do that?
Just take checks.
It was a group effort, Bob.
Let's look real formal.
We do appreciate all the time and effort you put into growing as board members.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Next, we have Mr. Hines with some special recognition.
Y'all are hard act to follow, so.
Tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's my special privilege to get to recognize Haywood County schools, our school district, our teachers, administrators, and others who have made this happen. We were contacted by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards back in September, late September, to let us know that Haywood County schools would be recognized nationwide for our accomplishments in this area. First, I'd like to read to you what the National Board standards are about. The founding mission of the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is to advance the quality of teaching and learning by maintaining high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do, provide a national voluntary system certifying teachers who meet these standards, and advocating related education reforms to integrate National Board certification in American education, to capitalize on the expertise of National Board certified teachers. Recognized as the gold standard in teacher certification, the National Board believes higher standards for teachers means better learning for students. So in September, they let us know that the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards has unveiled a program through recognized school districts across the country that work hard to promote student learning through accomplished teaching. The National Board Accomplished Districts Program will initially honor 81 districts in which at least 20% of its teachers have achieved National Board certification, encouraging teachers to be their best and effectively driving student learning. So I did a little research on that. All they said was 81 districts across the country would be recognized. I don't know if y'all have ever had the number put to you or not, but there are 14,836 school districts in the United States. 81 of them are being recognized, and we're one of them. So we're, that's, I did the math. I'm not real good at math. I was so state's teacher, but that's 500 thousandths of 1% of the school districts across the country, 5 thousandths of 1%. So this program was really started back under Carol Douglas when she was the HR Director, and she gave great support to beginning teachers and great support to teachers trying to get National Board certification. And when I came in, I continued that by hiring some really good people to help our teachers who wanted to attempt this. And so tonight, we want to thank our teachers who have attempted to do this and who have received certification. We want to thank our administrators who have supported them, all these folks sitting over here, all the principals out there who have supported them out every step of the way in getting that certification to be more effective. And we have two folks behind us here, Joey Sully and Sandy Strong, who have been very instrumental, and also Lynn Carter, who has been helping get them through the process, helping to coach them on their portfolios and make sure that they're successful. Over 50% of the teachers have been successful that have attempted this, where the national average is about 20%. So these ladies behind me have done a great job, and we appreciate what y'all do. Any questions?
I think that's amazing, and I really want to say thank you for what you're doing for our teachers and our schools.
We appreciate y'all's support too, and, you know, approving the budgets that we use to help them pay for things, and that's the biggest hurdle for the teachers, is helping them with financially while they attempt this, because it's not a cheap or inexpensive endeavor for them, so.
That's awesome.
They do get paid back in the long run, but it is helpful, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm next. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to present in regards to Policy 4270-6145, which would require the superintendent to provide an annual report to the board on compliance with laws and policies related to student wellness, which shall include a report on the system's compliance with laws and policies related to concussions and head injuries. On June 6th, I met with all athletic directors and reviewed this policy. Sections B, E, and G are audited each school year by DPI. Pisgah High School was audited this year for the 2018-19 school year, and Casey Crook submitted all items, requested, and the audit was successful, so we were in compliance there. All school athletic directors were reminded of the requirement of the concussion sheet that all athletes, parents, guardians, school employees, volunteer, or first responders must complete pertaining to concussion before they are allowed to participate in interscholastic athletic activities. Also encouraged ADs to have a preseason parent meeting to take care of these items in a timely manner. Athletic directors were reminded to have emergency action plans in place for each venue, specific location on their campus, that must include the requirements in Section E. I just want to brag on our athletic directors. All of our athletic directors do a great job keeping up with all the necessary paperwork pertaining to athletics, including but not limited to yearly school physicals, consent to treat, and concussion sheets. We have a new program called Family ID. Actually, I believe Mark Shepherd brought that on just ahead of me taking this position. This program allows for information to be stored and entered by either the athletic director or the athlete or parent, the athlete's parent or guardian. Once a student is entered, their information will follow them from middle school through high school. Another convenient feature is once the information is loaded, parents will be able to log in and print copies of their child's physicals. The program alerts the AD, parent, or guardian when a physical will expire, so that helps us comply with record-keeping Section G. So that is the, on behalf of the superintendent, that is the annual report on record-keeping for concussions and head injuries.
Any questions or comments?
I've actually jumped out of order, so I'll apologize. Glaive, have I not? Yes, I am. That's Dr. Nolte's fault, because he said that was next. If you heard a "kathump-kathump," that was the wheels. Sorry, Dr. Nolte. I still have a job. All right, next, we have a special recognition. We have Joe Buchanan, if you will, come on up. Joe was recognized by the North Carolina Public School Maintenance Association. He was selected out of all the maintenance directors in all of North Carolina as the Maintenance Director of the Year. That's quite of accomplishment, if you think about how many maintenance directors there are throughout.
Did you say in the state?
The state.
For the state?
Yes.
Or the district.
Or the state.
Or the state.
Okay.
If you're taking notes.
I mean, you've got to stand for that, for the state. Give me a job.
We'll give it to you.
Let me shake your hand. I didn't shake your hand lightly for the.
Congratulations.
That's a good accomplishment. Just for Ms. King, she's keeping notes. Mr. Kirkpatrick asked for clarification four times.
Next, we have Ms. Barker.
We had a order again? No, we're back.
We good?
We're back on track?
We're back.
He probably doesn't want to do my job either. No, Chairman Francis, members of the board, and central office, last month, I told you I wanted to come back and hit a few more highlights. I know that was that data had just been released, so, and I know y'all have had time to process a little bit and talk. I won't go back through this list. I did want to tell you that Riverbend Elementary, and Belinda, you might want to help me out here, but they are nominated for the Title I Distinguished School. They're in the final two. We were down there today. They had a lot of guests from all over the state there. They were interviewing the kids. Dr. Nolte and I walked in, and as soon as they interviewed the kids, they're like, "We love these kids. These kids are hilarious." So I feel good about it. We'll go next Thursday to Greensboro. Ms. Trenton will be at the Title I Conference, but we'll be at that luncheon, so it's their time. They deserve that award. They are definitely a distinguished school, and I told Jill, "You tell those people that you could take this staff and you, and, you know, the culture of this school, and what y'all do every day as far as instruction, and you could make it a successful school." So, I mean, you see her, tell her and her staff congratulations. So I wanted to add that too. They have, even being nominated is huge, so we're hoping for the best for them, and they'll do, they'll do great. So just again, you know, Early College, I did want to say you have John Serenius sitting here tonight, Teacher of the Year. Jonathan Valley exceeded growth this year, and he is a wonderful, phenomenal teacher. I interviewed him not long ago for a podcast, so listen into that. His passion for teaching is huge. When I first met him, he was a photographer for The Mountaineer, so he really has found his calling. And Lori, of course, y'all know that Early College and the accolades, being a blue ribbon school, and they're tied for first in the state. So I did want to share, Teresa Cook compiled this information. I think it's very interesting. I think it gives you a better look. When you talk about, you know, North Carolina having 115 public school districts, this is math, okay? So if you see on the left, our 3rd grade math, we are 10th out of 115 districts in the state in 3rd grade math. I mean, that's huge, you know? To put it in that perspective, and you look at the nine districts in front of us, I was on the phone with the Madison Assistant Superintendent and just talked to her about, she, they used to come to us and see what we do. They've done really well. We use the same math program, so they've had a lot of success with that. 4th grade math, again, we are 10th in the state out of 115 districts. 5th grade math dropped somewhat to 38th, but still, in, out of 115 districts in 5th grade math, we're very, very proud of that. And I know Kim Shipman is working really hard. We are, we believe in investigations, and we're doing a lot of retraining with that. We've had some new hires, so we are going back and really working on that this year. But again, when you see these teachers, this is, this puts it in a lot of perspective about how good our district is doing. Okay. As far as 6th and 7th grade math, out of 115 districts, our 6th grade math, you can see is 34th. 7th grade math, and I'll go ahead and tell you, the scores from math go down every year, so our high school scores are our lowest scores, and they go in that order, 3rd, 4th, 5th, they go down. In ELA, in English, it's total opposite. Our high scores are in English 2 in 8th grade. So it's very interesting to look at that, and there's probably some, some reasons for that, but in 8th grade math, we're 46. And so you can see those, those counties that are in the top 20, some of them are Western counties, some of them aren't. So we are looking at just some different things there, but again, to be 46 out of 115 districts is really, really good. Go back up to Math 1, and again, this year, Math 1 is kind of wonky, because remember, we didn't get to get the bank scores, so we're not sure if we're being compared to the same people, but Knox Harden and Ms. Cherry, that Jason hires through Title, was it Title 2, Jason, you hire, they were in my office all day working on some Math 1 assessments to help the teachers. The teachers had reached out to them, so they're in those classrooms all the time and just looking at Math 1. But our teachers are still doing a great job with that, so we'll continue to get better, but just wanted to show you those. Any questions just about math as a whole? Okay. All right, when you look at ELA, English Language Arts, and, you know, typically, you think your, your math scores are higher than English Language Arts usually. If you'll scroll down just a little bit more, there you can see Haywood County Schools 3rd grade is in 21st of 115, 4th grade 18th, and then 5th grade 19th out of 115 districts in English Language Arts. Now, again, remember, they're going to get better as we go down, which is, this is, we do an incredible job in literacy in our district, and we've had a lot of focus on that. Okay, 6th grade, 31st, 7th grade, 41st in the state, 8th grade ELA, 14th out of 115 districts. English 2, 14th out of 115 districts are English 2 scores, so I know that we, you know, we strive to get better, but we have to step back sometimes and realize, you know, what we have accomplished and brag on our people. Those are, those are great scores. People would kill to be where we are there. I'm very, very proud of that. Science, for 5th grade science, 35th, and you can also see the scores, how, you know, tight they can be. Our 8th grade science, 8th in the state of 115 districts. Keep saying that, so I just want, there's a combined total there for 5th and 8th grade science, but look at biology. And being a high school principal, we worked hard on biology, 17th. So I'm very, very proud of that, and a traditional high school looks good. We, I've had a lot of people call me about our ACT and work keys, you know, and I will tell you, we've worked hard on that, but this is something to be, you know, extremely proud of, 7th in the state on the ACT. And that's the test that matters to our kids, and it does. And so look at the districts ahead of us, some of them are huge, and some of them, you know, I feel like we're in great company there, but look how close. I mean, we'll target 72.9, so we're not, and I know our high schools are very focused on just want the best scores they can get for the kids in that. And then the ACT work keys combined, we're not in the state. So I thought, does that help put it in perspective somewhat? Have to tell you a story, though. I was, Kennedy asked me one day, "What have you been working on?" And I was telling her, "Growth." Now, this is proficiency, but I told her I've been working on EVOs and growth and telling her about that, and she said, "Mom, but how do you measure when a teacher grows you as a human being? How do y'all measure that?" That was a good question. Can I share? So, you know, I think, you know, Dr. Beal used to, I remember, as an early, you know, when I was a principal, he would get up and talk about extracurricular and clubs and programs and all these other pieces that are important too. The academics are a huge piece too. So I want to be proud of that and proud of our kids and our teachers and our principals and this staff that we're working so hard to just try to make it better for our kids. They get the best education they can get, but what questions you have for me?
I don't think there's a question. I'd just like to make a comment. That's quite an accomplishment from our staff and administration and students, parents, the whole community.
Yeah, I mean, our principals right now, they are very committed, you know, just wanting to do, I love working with them. They're doing a fantastic job, these people here. It's just a lot of passionate people out there, so I'm proud to be where I'm. You know, when you're, when you're in 3rd grade math and you're 10th in the state, there are people in our district that are first within that, so, you know, you can really drill on down, so when you see them, just tell them.
Great job.
Yeah. I appreciate y'all and your support, and thank you.
Thank you. Good report, Ms. Barker. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board tonight in open session? This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented from the closed and regular session meeting on September the 9th.
So move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick made a motion. I hear second. Say, Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We need to approve the folks that are going to travel to the annual conference. Just a motion to approve board members that are attending it.
Make a motion.
Ms. Barrett's made a motion to approve our trip to the annual conference. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. In reference to that also, we have the opportunity to send or have four voting delegates based on our current expenditures. And I checked this with Ms. Gardner and make sure I wasn't cheating the system. I felt like in the past it was local current. It says total current expenditures funds one, two, and three. So, we've, we've figured it out. So, we're eligible for four. How many folks are going? Raise your hand. Who wants to be a voting delegate?
Are you going to? But you're not going to Greensboro? You can't go.
Is Jimmy going?
I think Jimmy's going. You reckon he'd want to be a?
Yeah, Jimmy's always.
Jimmy's down as a voting delegate.
And then put Larry down. And Jim down. Nope. Nope. And Ann. There you go.
Ann.
Settled.
Jimmy Rogers, Larry, Ann, and Bobby. She's on there. I've got room for none.
Then Jim.
Jim, okay. You want to be an alternate?
Yeah, I'll put Dr. Rogers as an alternate.
Okay. Okay.
So, I'll make a motion. We do that. Do we have to make a motion?
We have a motion on the floor. As our voting delegates to be Mr. Jimmy Rogers, Mr. Larry Henson, Ms. Ann Barrett, Mr. Jim Francis, and our first alternate, Dr. Bobby Rogers. And that's in the form of a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're back to Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a technical error in that our list did not attach. I can come back in a minute and read you those names for the council unless you want to trust us and have us send it to you later.
No, I make a motion. We approve the parent advisory council for 19, 2019.
As was going to be presented.
Right.
There you go.
Exactly.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. I hear a second. I'll second. Say, Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Could you send that link to us?
We'll, we'll put it in the minutes and we'll send you the names. Have them right here.
Of course.
Got it. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, they've accused me a few times of trying to practice law up there at the DA's office, trying to get my kids off of speeding tickets and stuff. So, I'm, I'm Pat Smathers tonight. Mr. Smathers had to leave and for a meeting tonight. And we have an item on here that we need to approve the sale of the Terrace Drive property in Canton. And the purchase price is $24,667. And the property is 918 Terrace Drive, Canton. And my understanding is, is Mr. Smathers will put this in the paper and it still would be subject to a possible upset bid that will be taken by our superintendent's office after it's being printed in the paper. All we need to do now is just approve the sale of this offering contract. Is that correct? Am I saying it right? Okay.
I make a motion. We accept the bid of the money.
All right, we have a, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second? Say by Dr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next we have an item from Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Special Issues Committee, we met September the 23rd and we'd like to bring before the whole board a motion to approve the honorarium approved in closed session, which will be announced at a later date.
That's correct.
Yes.
When awarded.
When awarded. Couldn't read that, couldn't read it. That's in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say by Dr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Dr. Putnam, he's already up again.
I didn't listen to Dr. Nolte this time. I hope I'm on the right item here. All right, I am here to request application for payment for the Pisgah High School addition from lottery. We have four more payments after this year for the Pisgah High School addition. The four remaining payments total just over 709,000. With the final payment being made December 2023. Our current lottery balance is $1,662,534.44. Requesting $186,447.50. With your approval, make that request.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Henson's made the motion to approve. And Mr. Dr. Rogers has made the second. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Gardner's going to get her budget caught up here.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board. I'm here this evening requesting your approval of Agenda Item Number 21, 2019-20 Budget Resolution. To this point, we have been operating off of the interim budget resolution that you approved in June. We typically make that interim budget resolution good for about five months of expenditures. Well, it's October. And at the end of September, the state did drop allocations. And what that is, it's there 2018-19, we're operating under a continuation budget on the state side. So, this evening, you will be approving the budgets, the budget resolution at the purpose level. That is the legal level of control for expenditures within the state mandated chart of accounts. So, you'll see it's 5,000 is instructional services, 6,000 is system wide support, 7,000 ancillary, and 8,000 is non-program charges. And after tonight, any change at that level has to come to the board in the form of a budget amendment for your approval. Just very briefly, each budget, the state budget, as I said, is a continuation budget of 2018-19. Local current expense budget is based on the revenue side, is based on the county appropriation and anticipated fines and forfeitures and ABC revenue. You'll notice at this time, there is no appropriated fund balance. We talked about that last spring. We will appropriate that as we get closer to the end of the year. Federal budgets, federal grant budgets, it's kind of a partial budget. We have several budgets that are tied together with the CCIP, the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan that connects district goals for improvement to budgeted activities. And so, there's about four or five, is it about five, Ms.? That want, they all get approved together, but it's contingent upon approval of that plan. So, we're sitting at just over 2 million in federal, but that'll go, get closer to about 5.2 million when it's all said and done. Capital outlay, that is the $900,000 that was requested from our county commissioners during the spring budget session. And child nutrition budget, we are bringing this evening the same amount that they requested approval for in the spring. We may have to go back and do an adjustment for her or an amendment. Since we don't know pay increases at this time, we do know there was an increase in retirement and insurance. So, it's at a later date. She may do an amendment, but she was comfortable going ahead and bringing what you all approved in the spring at this point. And finally, Fund Eight includes budgeted carryover as well as anticipated revenues from programs such as our WIWA, ROTC, and after-school and facility use programs. Very quickly, all of these budgets total to just over 70.4 million dollars. Of that 70 million dollars, 84% is budgeted to salaries and benefits. That's a lot of money. If you look back five years ago, the budget resolution was close to the same amount. And about 76% at that time was budgeted for salaries and benefits. But of course, you know, insurance in five years has gone up $1,000 per person. Our retirement rate five years ago was 15.12%. It is now 19.7%. And so, when you have those budgeted dollars and those benefits keep increasing, it really just pushes that total percent. Any questions?
At this time, we entertain a motion to approve the budget resolution.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 budget resolution presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Francis, second of Mr. Henson.
Mr. Clark.
Excuse me. I knew I was going to do that tonight. Mr. Clark. Please.
Excuse me. You have a little more higher than I do. But it's great.
We have a second by Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Maybe I need to go to sleep a little earlier tonight. All right, next we have Dr. Nolte.
For the first time, also not attached, but here and we'll send it to you. I'm sorry. For the first time, we are in need of a Turkish Arabic interpreter. And we, we have a contract here that would enter into that agreement for $46 an hour for a face-to-face meeting. And we know that we have one hour that we'll need to use, but possibly others. And that's part of our requirement under serving students who have English as a second language, not as their primary language. We're very familiar with serving Hispanic students. We've had a variety of students that we need to serve in the past and we can usually find those in the community. This is the first time that we've needed one for Turkish Arabic.
Okay. Does anybody want to make the motion to approve that service agreement? Dr. Rogers made the motion, seconded by Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
How does this contract correlate or relate to other interpreters we've, we've had or other languages?
Ask for other languages.
Thank you. It is the going right for. Very unique, okay.
Is this to communicate with the parents?
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Dr. Putnam.
So, policy's not for first read. There are three. Four in total, but three are grouped together. First three are 1510 slash 4200 slash 7270 in the policy for school safety. Second policy, 1720 4015 slash 7225, discrimination, harassment, and bullying complaint procedure. And the last one in that group, 4333, weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety. I group all those together because they have one thing in common. They all reference the new anonymous safety tip line that is now required by state law. If you remember, I brought to you in a work session, the See Something, Say Something Anonymous Reporting App. That is now state-funded, state-operated, and state-required. And these policies actually came out ahead of the anonymous reporting system. So, they've been tabled since the spring. I didn't think y'all would want to put in policy, policies that you couldn't act upon or actually fulfill. And we could not until the anonymous reporting system become functional. To the best we can tell, DPI and the state is telling us that these, this anonymous reporting system will be functional by November 4th. So, we got it to you in time to table it for first read and then hopefully approve at the November meeting so that it's just, it's actually on the same day that it go, the anonymous reporting goes live. And then the last, last one is 3101, which is dual enrollment. And basically, the, the main change in this policy is that it takes out language that uses junior and senior to simply read qualified high school student. That's the, the major change in 3101 dual enrollment.
Okay. All the listed policies will be tabled until the next board meeting to allow public input. Any questions for Dr. Putnam? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we were going to do the regular monthly finance reports with a couple of add-ons, I think it was, or one. Okay.
The Finance Committee has reviewed the regular monthly finance report and everything looks good. So, I want to make a motion to approve the.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Clark. I hear second by Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I'm going to also make a motion to approve the purchase of an activity bus from Fund Eight with the possibility of getting reimbursed. And I guess there's a lawsuit with Volkswagen over emissions. And anyway, we have a way if we purchase the bus, apply for a grant and get reimbursed, but we have to buy the bus first. And we do need one. We were planning on buying one anyway. But if we go ahead and buy it and go through the steps, then we have a good chance we'll get reimbursed for this. Go ahead and approve the buying of bus right now.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Clark. I hear a second. Say, Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then we had, did we say we was going to do Kelly first or Building Grounds first? Let's do Building Grounds. That'll give me more chance to get my words together.
The first one is to approve the renovation of the large conference room here at the Education Center. But depending on DPI plans and approval, it may also include the small conference in order to meet the size requirements by DPI. To convert those into science labs that'll be used by Tuscula and Isda's AP Science classes as well as used by Central Haywood. as well as, uh, used by Central Hager.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Rogers from Building Grounds. Do I hear a second? I'll second. Say it, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Any cost estimates on that?
We already have seventy-five thousand dollars approved in the budget for this.
Okay.
We needed a, a new lab, so.
I think I remember that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Following that motion, we also have another, uh, in effort to expedite the renovation of those science labs, Building Grounds moves that we, uh, waive the formal bid process. We need those built already.
Oh, yeah.
So, we need to move ahead. For this project, I don't want to waive that formal bid process.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Rogers and the Building Grounds Committee Chair. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a contract with, uh, Kelly Services and, uh, to approve tonight. And, um, it's for, you want to talk to us about it, Dr. Putnam, and give us a little synopsis of it? I know that we've heard it a couple of times, but just a brief.
Yes, Kelly, the Kelly Staffing option was presented in work session and discuss, uh, discussed ad nauseam. And, um, uh, Mr. Smathers actually took the contract for Kelly's staffing and reviewed that contract to go over any, uh, legal issues that may exist. And, um, essentially, Kelly's staffing, uh, what they will do is provide, uh, temporary, uh, employment uh, and fill positions where we are having difficulty finding substitutes in child nutrition, uh, and in, uh, our custodial positions. Uh, these, these folks will not be our employee. They will be an employee of Kelly Staffing Services. Uh, Kelly Staffing Services, uh, provides them their pay. Kelly Staffing provides them their benefits package and any incentives they may receive. We are contracting, uh, with Kelly Staffing to provide us, uh, fill-ins or temporary help where needed. Um, so, uh, to use as an example, uh, our, um, two of our assistant principals had to fill in on a serving line at Tuscola High School last Friday and serve on those serving lines because we could not find available substitutes uh, for our child nutrition staff at that site. And that's become pretty commonplace and is really putting a, a lot of stress on our other employees. And so, we're just trying to alleviate some of that stress. Um, and so, uh, we feel like it'll be a, a, a big help, uh, to those areas, that being custodial and child nutrition and those two areas only.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion. We approve the contract with, uh, Kelly's staffing. Okay. Dr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
I just want to make sure, make it clear that this is to help our employees out there and that by no means are we trying to replace them or, or anything like that. This is, this is a way to help the schools and get them through those rough times when we may have a, a employee that's sick for, you know, a couple of weeks or something or extended period of time in order to keep the, our system going and operating the most efficient way as possible.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have, what is it, eight? Seven, four, and one of them.
Six.
Six, one.
Six to one.
Six.
Six to one. Motion carries. I can't count tonight. Six.
Six, one.
Six, one. We're verifying that. We got it. Next, we have Dr. Nolte for our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and our guests. Uh, at this time, I come, uh, to you to present the personnel that we discussed, uh, earlier in closed session. Uh, for your information, uh, thirteen separation from employment and one leave of absence. For your approval, twelve employments, twenty employee status changes, two contracted services, five substitutes, twenty-four employee coaches, nine non-employee coaches, thirteen volunteer coaching services, and eighty-eight bus driver hour verifications.
Make a motion. We approve personnel as presented. Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's, uh, work, hard work on the committees and we covered a lot of stuff tonight. And I sort of appreciate everybody's attention and working hard tonight. So, there not, being nothing else to come before the board, meeting adjourned.